Thank you for coming on this night, our first city council meeting on this evening. This is January 14th, 2025. And we are going to be starting our city council meeting off tonight with our swearing in ceremony. We did have down for invocation, Councilmember Wilhelmina Scott for District Three, but she is not present at the time. So we're going to ask if Reverend Crummy, oh, sorry, here she comes, here she comes. Okay. Well, if Reverend Crummy don't mind, from the Greater St. James AME Church of Lake City, South Carolina, O'More Street.
All right.
Okay.
You can be seated up. But I'll do what you all do, whatever y'all do.
Do he have a mic, please? He's gonna get you. Jonathan's bringing him a mic.
Thank you. May we pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this new year.
Father, the leadership of our council, for the citizens of Lake City. Father God, we need you to guide us, O thou great Jehovah. For we are your pilgrims in this barren land. We are weak, but you are almighty. Hold us with your powerful hands. And as this meeting continues, O God, allow your holy spirit to govern. And Father, if you govern, we know everything would be all right. We thank you for our mayor and council, and those who are involved in this administration. And Father, we ask that you would keep us this year in perfect peace. Where there's hatred, bring love. Where there's division, bring us together. And please give us a heart like thine, and we will forever praise you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you, Reverend Crummy. We are now going to proceed with our swearing in ceremony. As you all know, we're coming together tonight to swear in one newly elected councilwoman for District Five, correct? That's right, District Five. And to reelect councilwomen for the City of Lake City, and that is District Four and District Two. We are going to start off with Councilmember Sandra Fleming-Crosby. She will be sworn in by Minister Judge Christopher Weatherford, accompanied by Chandra, Ashandra Crosby, her daughter. You may come to the front.
Well, in addition to my daughter, I'd like to invite Judge Washington, please come stand, and all of the other people that I, whoso desires to stand.
Okay.
Would you like your daughter to hold the Bible?
I appreciate my daughter.
That's good. All right, councilwoman, would you please place your left hand on the Bible? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I, Sandra Fleming-Crosby.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
Defend.
Defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As councilmember.
As councilmember.
Of the City of Lake City.
Of the City of Lake City.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly.
Fairly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise the trust.
Reposed in me.
Reposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavor.
And I will use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purpose for which I have been elected.
The purpose for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
With the power invested in me by the City of Lake City and the State of South Carolina, I congratulate you, Councilwoman Sandra Fleming-Crosby.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much. I need to sign here, right? Yeah, she's got, she's just got to sign it here. I'm gonna sign it here, and I'm gonna sign it there, okay?
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Crosby, do you like to share any remarks at this time?
Well, I want to thank all of you for coming to witness this ceremony. And I will, to the best of my ability, as I stated, continue to try to do what is best for the community of Lake City and whatever I can for other communities. And at any time, if anyone should feel a need to make contact with me about anything, please feel free to do so. If I can help you, I will. If I cannot, I can probably refer you to the person or people you need to make contact with. But I am here as your servant, and I want you to hold me accountable for that. And that's it. Again, thank you all for coming, and happy to get everybody. Your daughter there, Chandra, she doesn't like, she doesn't like me.
Stand up. Stand up.
And of course, Reverend Crummy is my pastor, and his lovely first lady, Mrs. Crummy, is pastor of my church. I want to thank you for doing the invocation, Reverend Crummy. And again, thank you all for.
Thank you, Councilwoman Crosby. Congratulations again for another four years in your term.
Thank you.
As councilwoman.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we'll have Councilmember Melissa Askins, newly elected, and her family. Let's give her a round of applause. She will be sworn in by Anna Howell, accompanied by Elliot Askins, her husband, Ella Askins, her daughter, Adeline Askins, daughter, Olivia Askins, daughter who's not present.
I, Melissa Askins.
I, Melissa Askins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As councilmember.
As councilmember.
Of the City of Lake City.
Of the City of Lake City.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly.
Fairly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise the trust.
Reposed in me.
Reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purposes.
The purposes.
For which I have been elected.
For which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilwoman.
Congratulations.
We'll ask, would you like to share some remarks or thanks?
Just want to thank everybody for coming, and I'm looking forward to serving the community. I'm excited about this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Dewannica Cooper, who is not present at this moment. But within our regular city council meeting, as she come in, we were insert her time to get sworn in. But also at this moment, before we adjourn for a few minutes before our actual city council meeting starts at six, I would like to ask former councilmember William Askins to come up, please. I think you said that back in 2021.
Yeah, I know I was in trouble there.
And I say that because back in 2021 is when both me and you actually came on council. We were elected in November 2020, and we actually sat over there.
In the middle of COVID.
In the middle of COVID.
Put us in the corner already.
Right, right. And those are his words, it's like, oh, we in the corner already together. This has been a fabulous four years serving with you. We thank you for your service. We thank you for all that you've done, all the wisdom that you brought, all the determination and commitment that you have brought to the City of Lake City. And we wish you well. We now have your sister-in-law.
Yeah.
In your place. So we have another Askins. I usually call him Askins, so I might do the same for you, Askins. But City of Lake City, thank you for your years of dedicated service as councilmember. We thank you.
Thank you so much. And I want to say thank you for your wonderful service, my dear, I appreciate it for good years.
All right. Oh, did you get, did you want a picture? You got a picture? Askins. You're gonna shake your hand? Yeah. I think everybody, we.
We get everybody. I'll block anybody out.
All right. Thank you. We were in this portion at, it's like 5:44 or 5:45, and we will return to city council meeting to open it up at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, I am Mayor Yomika Robinson for the great city of Lake City, and I am calling this regular city council meeting to order Tuesday, January 14, 2025. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. We will be led, the invocation will be led by councilmember Wilhelmina Scott, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Brown. Can we please stand?
Let us pray. Dear God, we are grateful. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you, dear God, for a new year, a new day. We thank you, dear God, for bringing us back together in 2025. Thank you for our new elected member tonight and all the members here in the city of Lake City that came concerned about this city. Bless us right now, Lord. Bless the mayor. Bless every electoral official. Bless them in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this moment, thank you, Councilwoman Scott, for the invocation. Thank you, Councilmember Brown, for the allegiance. At this moment, we're going to, before we move any further, we're going to go ahead and do the swearing-in ceremony for Councilmember DeWannica Cooper. She will be sworn in by Minister Judge Christopher Weatherford, accompanied by Charles Nero, her father, Jeanette Nero. Oh, mother, excuse me, I'm sorry. And Charlton Nero, brother.
Hi.
Please place your left hand on the Bible.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I, DeWannica Cooper.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of the state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office to which I have been elected.
Of the office in which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Thereof.
Thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
Defend.
Defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the United States.
And the United States.
As councilmember.
As councilmember.
Of the city of Lake City.
Of the city of Lake City.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly.
Fairly.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise this trust.
Reposed in me.
Reposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavor.
And I will use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purpose for which.
The purpose for which.
I have been elected.
I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
With the power entrusted in me by the city of Lake City and state of South Carolina, I congratulate you, Councilwoman DeWannica Cooper, on your next term in office.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Councilwoman Cooper. Would you like to say any words tonight to the public?
Yes, first, I would like to thank everyone for your support. Of course, I would like to thank God because without him, nothing is going on. So I'm absolutely thankful, forever grateful. I just thank you guys for entrusting me, entrusting me to continue on the duties of Councilmember of District Four. And like I have been before, I still pledge to do what I need to do in order to ensure that Lake City is taken care of and that the citizens and the well-being of everyone is taken care of. I just thank you guys, and let's just work together just so that we can continue to thrive in 2025.
That's right. Thank you, Councilwoman Cooper. Congratulations once again on your next four years and your term.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we will go along with our agenda. I will ask Madam Clerk to please poll city council members. Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Nicole Singletary.
Present.
To Councilmember Wilhelmina Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Melissa Haskins.
Present.
Councilmember DeWannica Cooper.
Present.
And Councilmember Sandra Pollock Cosby.
Present.
And of course, Councilmember Jason Brett.
Present.
Mayor Robinson, I find you to be a part.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have a voting ballot for Mayor Pro Tem. We do voting for Mayor Pro Tem every two years. So now, we are going to proceed with voting for the next Mayor Pro Tem for the next two years. Can we get city clerk to, a mic, please?
Okay, we have one vote for Nicole Singletary. Excuse me. One vote for DeWannica Cooper. Second vote for DeWannica Cooper. Third vote for DeWannica Cooper. One for Wilhelmina Scott. Four votes for DeWannica Cooper. Two votes for Nicole Singletary. Mayor, we have a new Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Cooper.
Let's give her a round of applause. Congratulations again. I should say not Councilwoman Cooper, but Mayor Pro Tem Cooper. Mayor Pro Tem Cooper. I'll ask again, would you like more words to say?
Excuse me. So again, I would like to thank my colleagues who I've served with for a year now. But thank you guys for entrusting me in being the next, well, the new Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Lake City. Again, I pledge to do all I can to serve the community, and let's work together. That's the only way we're gonna make it happen, working together.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Excuse, oh, okay, we're going to move forward, please. Next on our agenda, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Next, I need a motion to approve the minutes. Approval of the minutes from the mayor and council meeting December 10, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second. Who's second?
Oh.
Second.
It was properly moved and second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have a platform for our young people addressing the mayor and council. We have Chance Hardin, the Health Project nonprofit organization seeking to advance environmental justice and climate resilience in Lake City and the surrounding areas. Excuse me. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Chandler Brandon, and I'm excited to introduce to you the Health Project, the first youth-led nonprofit in Lake City in which I am the founder and director, and Chance Hardin is my co-founder.
Okay.
The Health Project is all about empowering rural communities like ours to face environmental challenges head-on. When it comes to climate change, pollution, or sustainability, it often feels like these are distant issues meant for scientists or policymakers. But the reality is, these issues affect us all, our homes, our health, and even our economy. With the Health Project, we're working to make environmentalism personal, tangible, and impactful for Lake City. Whether it's hosting community cleanups, spreading education on sustainable practices, or creating spaces for meaningful conversations, our goal is to show how taking care of our environment is deeply tied, deeply tied, to taking care of each other. What sets the Health Project apart is our focus on inclusivity. We're committed to supporting those who have often been left out of environmental conversations, people of color, economically disadvantaged families in rural neighborhoods. Together, we can make sustainability a shared value and not just a buzzword. The name Health Project reflects our vision. A health is the center of warmth and community in a home. Similarly, we want to make this initiative the spark of the same kind of connection in action, creating a Lake City that thrives while protecting its natural resources. I invite you all to join us, whether it's volunteering, sharing ideas, or simply spreading the word. Together, we can make a lasting difference, not just for today, but for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Chandler. I hope everyone heard our young people tonight. We see that they want to make a difference. They're actually making initiatives to make a difference. And I ask everyone to really do their part in helping our young people do what they like to see in the city of Lake City. I do appreciate you coming out here tonight and expressing on your new project, and I can't wait to hear more. And whatever I can do as your mayor, and I'm pretty sure I can speak for the councilmembers as well, please don't ever hesitate to contact us because we are here for you. Also, for this, a platform for our youth, our young people addressing the mayor and council, any youth group or young person, individual, in your church or your school or whomever can contact me by my email or myself by my email or City Clerk Marcia by the last Thursday in the month before the city council the next month. So please encourage our young people to come out and speak to the mayor and council about their ideas for the city of Lake City. Okay? Next, we have a presentation. I'm not sure if he's here. Okay. Reverend Hooker, but he's not here tonight, so we're probably gonna have to move forward, and that's probably have to be at the next meeting. Public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk to counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Congratulations to newly elected and re-elected official, and congratulations on your new position. I know you did a good job. I come before you in reference to two-minute clock, that's number one, and do not expect an answer. I have failed before this body for a long time. In fact, ever since I moved back to Lake City. I wanted to be, I want to be treated fairly. At other meetings, that clock was even nowhere. And people was allowed to speak as long as they want to. In fact, it was 39 minutes, to be exact, because you know I timed it, okay? And they was asked for answers. And guess what? Asked to give answers from all of you. So I want to be treated fairly because I come with concerns as well. Part two, I didn't make it to the last meeting, but a weapon was allowed in this body. Nobody, and Chief of Police didn't address it. This is a sensitive time in America. You wonder what the weapon was? It's placed right here. If somebody had thrown that at anyone or y'all, it could knock your brains out. Nobody addressed that. But it was allowed in this body. So we need to treat everybody fairly because I know if that happened on the street, somebody would have went to jail. Right, Chief? You don't have to answer. Now, due to the recent dismissal of the chief administrator, there's so many rumors out there. And as a taxpaying citizen, I have.
Ms. Maddie Thomas, your time.
Address these men. No, I'm not gonna start.
Yes, ma'am.
Because you allow other people to do it when it's in your favor.
Ms. Maddie Thomas.
I'm asking you for you to vote for me to finish what I have to say.
Ms. Maddie Thomas, this is a new year. It's two-minute clock, and I've asked you to sit down. Ms. Maddie Thomas, that's twice I ask you to sit down. Ms. Maddie Thomas, that's the third time I ask you to sit down.
Okay. To disavow these rumors.
I ask for, excuse me, one second. I ask for respect, no personal verbal attacks, as we have our public comment period. And I am presiding this meeting, and I want everyone to be respectful in this meeting. And I will be respectful to them. But we have to abide, you have to abide by the rules of this meeting.
This is on tape.
Yes, it is.
This is on tape.
Yes.
And if you allow last month to people to come up here and speak freely because of what's concerned about you, then why can't that apply to the city as well?
We can address, we can address that later, but I'm asking you.
I'm gonna speak. Is my minute up because she gave me?
Yes, your minute is up. Ms. Margaret, if you have anything to say.
Here, we start the clock. We start the clock in.
For Ms. Margaret, for Ms. Margaret, if you have a comment, Ms. Margaret, I'm asking you to please respect that here in this, in this courtroom. If you have a comment, please use your two or your one, but Ms. Maddie gonna have to take her seat. No, ma'am.
No.
No, ma'am. Ms. Maddie, please take your seat.
Please let her voice her concerns. She's a taxpayer just like the rest.
Ms. Maddie, I'm asking you to please take your seat.
I think she's being as respectful as she can be. She's just letting us know what she has observed, and this is her perception. And she, I think she's allowed.
And it could been, it was allowed in the allotted time.
Is it because I'm black?
No, ma'am.
That's why I'm not a friend of yours and I didn't speak in your favor?
No, ma'am.
And that's why I'm not allowed, you're allowed last month? What's different about this month? What's different about this month? What is different about this month? What is different about this month?
Chief, don't.
Don't you dare put your hand on me, Chief.
We're not asking to, we're not trying to put hands on anyone. I've asked you to please.
Do not, do not put hands on her.
Well, he received the $120, uh, the pay. Number two, was he fired so the mayor can come and say she's serving as sister, as a, it's two jobs now? Was the problem, as a taxpayer, I'm asking for an audit, a forensic audit, so we will know. Because the rumor is the city don't have one dime. There's nothing that's been done according to the budgetary. As a citizen, we need this, okay? Thank you so much.
You address the lawyer what's going on.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I still got to say what I had to say.
And it's like Ms. Maddie was, I'm saying, you should also address to the lawyer also about what's going on in our community. As she say, we do have a right, ask citizens to know what's going on in our community. Do the city have enough money for the year 2025? And why are these things happening? We don't know a budget. Has there been audit to make sure that we have money in the budget for the things that we have coming up for the year 2025? And also, as Ms. Maddie was saying, we are citizens of South Cal, of Lake City. We need answers. If you cannot answer them now, give it us in writing by the next meeting, and we appreciate that. And it's like Ms. Maddie said, everybody should be treated fairly. If someone was allowed over two minutes last week, last month, it should happen the same. Please continue to treat everybody the same way. Just because someone is saying something you don't like, that doesn't give you the right to make them sit down if someone else had five and 10 minutes on last month. And as she was saying, you got to give accountability to the guilty. The administrator did not run the city by himself. He had mayor, he had council. So every, the council members should know what's in the budget. The mayor should know how much in the budget. He should be able to tell us what's in our 2025 budget. I like that answer by the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Margaret. Thank you, Ms. Margaret. Ms. Maddie.
We do need prayer. We do need prayer. We do need prayer. But I'm not gonna pray. I'm here. I came here for us to have, I came here to tell about some celebration that's going on in this city in this month right here. On January the twentieth. At nine o'clock AM in the morning, we're gonna meet at the continuing, and we're gonna march down Main Street, and we wanna celebrate the great Doctor Martin Luther King. Ms. Beverly Campbell will be our speaker. So we inviting all of you. We inviting all of you to come and only go at the clock run out. On January the twenty-eighth, we wanna do another celebration. By hero, one of our heroes of the city, Doctor Ron Gignac. Now, we will have the thirty-ninth candlelight visual event. There at the Ron Gignac Monument. There are great things gonna go on that evening. We know it's gonna be cold, but we already done one blower. If the city got any blowers, if you can help us, there's a blower, you know, heat blower. So we gonna be warmed up, because we already fired up to celebrate. So come and let's celebrate. It's a celebration. God bless y'all.
Thank you.
And forgive me for anything that I said.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I am here for a celebration also. I am the president of the Booster Club at Lake City High School. And we have been celebrating on every home game, the athletic department. And Coach Seneca Barry has been celebrating different organizations and persons at every home, home game. And this Friday at the home game, we are celebrating the first responders of Lake City, South Carolina. So uh Chief Miles.
Chief Diggers.
Diggers, any EMS, um. We already have the trainers. We're, um, if you guys are not busy, it will be halftime of the boys' basketball game. And we would like for you to come out so we can show appreciations to all our responders of Lake City. And if you can, um, would you let Chief Diggers know?
Yes.
And also Mayor, um, I am also the president of alumni. And we would like to come and do a presentation on homecoming for this year and all the great things that we brought here to Lake City. Even down to how many people visit, down to the money that was actually made in the city of Lake City during that time.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you.
Hello everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I don't belong. Um, I live in Buffalo State down the road there, down three forty-one. We got a water problem coming in there in the entrance. We got a problem in the sewer. When the water, when that water, water will get full. Right in the bathroom. My baby in the bathroom, she flushed, that bacteria come on my. So that mean that we gotta do something about the system over there. We got money now. I hope we can get our area over there done. Cost in um brown, Mayor. And that my main thing is, what I'm saying, sitting on the stool, I don't wanna, when that rain get overflow. And we, we, we press the system. My baby flush the bathroom on the other end. We'll sit the other bathroom when it get, it called pressure in, in the system. That's what it is.
Did you put your address down there?
No, just, no ma'am, I'll put it over there.
Okay.
And nothing here, that lady over there, sent to you.
Sent to you.
She doing a wonderful job. Well, we need a gym. We need a gym. Our baby need a gym right here. We got some money somewhere. Dig it up, dig it up, dig it up, because she doing a great job, but she need your help. And did a good job, the water department doing a great job, the maintenance department. Every time I have a problem, it comes out there, but it really is the pipes in the ground. So you just got some money now, take your other piece first, but take a Buffalo State up there. And the water coming in, might get hot and clean, the water. And migrans and other things, and chilling in our bathroom when it flushes. I want no bacteria on there. Look at it, sir, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes sir. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'm on the clock, so I'm gonna say this. As a child growing up here in Lake City, it's disheartening to see how my elderly folk are acting. Respect is due to a dog. And we can get more done without being resistant to each other and try to work together in peace. I don't speak politics. I ain't come up here on politics. But it's in my heart to come up here and say something because how y'all expect the young people to act? And y'all acting the way y'all acting? That's, that's crazy to me, and it's disheartening. People who I've grown up to look up at, to respect, always taught to respect my elders. But it's disheartening. We shouldn't allow politics to allow our character to get in the way of our good judgment. Again, I say, respect is due to a dog. If you can't be respectful, man, keep them two minutes and take it to the legislator, take it to the senator, take it to the president, because they ain't gonna hear you like the Lake City Mayor and the council is hearing you. So I feel some type of way, that's why I came up here. I came up here to say what I had to say. I always been taught to stand ten toes down, and I'ma stand for something and fall for nothing. So to see my elderly act like that is disheartening. Everybody know me. Everybody know me. You right, Ms. Maddie, it go both ways. You got to give it an order to earn it. But somebody, when they go low, you got to go high. Somebody got to be the bigger person sometime. And we got to work together. We behind. How we gonna get ahead and we, we, we strifin', we arguing. We got to respect their position, and we got to help them. Each one teach one. That's my two minutes.
Thank you. Due to time, where we gonna have to get to our business, it's gonna be our last public comment period for, I mean, comment for tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Congratulations to everyone that won a race that's before us today. Welcome to the city council. Uh, what I need for y'all guys to do is, I need for y'all to really study y'all city charter. So y'all get clarification, understanding of the power that y'all have as council, what y'all can and can't do. And use y'all legal counsel that y'all have in the room. If you don't understand, stop the meeting. That's what he's here for. That, that's his job. That's what y'all pay him here to come here and do so, hold him accountable. If you don't understand, so I just need for everybody to, we not all gonna get along, and that's okay. But at the end of the day, as long as y'all come to agreement, and don't hold nothing personal, okay? Don't, don't take this out of here with y'all. Y'all here to do a job for us citizens of Lake City. That's all, that's all I could expect for y'all to do, and that's all they could expect for y'all to do, is to be fair. So get a, read your, read your city charter, where you ordering this book, and then come back to us, alright? And be in it, talk to us like somebody. And if you could give answers, give the answers. That's what y'all, y'all abide. Y'all able to come in and say, I, I want an answer there. So give the answers. Alright, thank y'all, y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move for, to our legislative part, portion of our meeting. We have only one resolution on the agenda tonight. Resolution two zero two five point zero zero one for final reading. A resolution seeking, no ma'am. We already, already cut that off for tonight. You had to move on. Resolution two zero two five point zero zero one for final reading. A resolution seeking approval to accept and reappoint Mr. Warren Carter and Mr. Frank Burgess to the planning commission board and other matters related thereto.
Second.
It has been properly moved and, and second, any questions, council?
Yes, Dom, do we have any other people, did we advertise for this presentation?
We do, we were advertised, and we sent out emails to the exploring term asking if they expressed interest in reappointment. And they both expressed reappointment, and that, their emails are attached to your agenda.
Okay, well the um, how, I mean, what sources did you send the advertisers to?
It's, it's on Matchboard. It's um a link that's located on the city website. Um, and it's posted on the city website that we're looking for people. And they can go there, and they can place their application through that board. Um, it's an automated process. And um, I received an email, or Latoya received an email with the applications, and we bring them forward with all the other emails showing the interest. We have no interest, except for Mr. Carter.
Okay, so we didn't get any interest?
No ma'am.
You think that might be because, um, did you send the information that the people who are already serving on the, on the, who were interested?
Right, but we also, yeah, we, we let them notify them that their term is up and asking if they would like to be reappointed. And if they do, we asked them to send us an email saying that they would like to be reappointed to the board.
Yeah, but I was asking if the email they sent to possible other interested people.
Well, we had no other interested people. Nobody even reached out on Matchboard to show any interest. So therefore, otherwise, we would've taken it, say there was three other applicants that wanted to join, we would've then taken all five applicants and would've done the due diligence process.
Okay. Um, that's good, all in good. But I, I think we need to probably look into another way of um advertising. Because if you advertise, I thought, thought I understood you to say that when you sent the advertisement to the other prospects that you said in the advertisement that the people who are currently serving were still interested in the position?
No, I didn't send them an advertisement. I sent them an email telling them that their term was expiring and asking if they've expressed themselves, that they would like to be reappointed. On Matchboard, on Facebook, we post availabilities and vacancies on the planning board. Anybody can apply through that system in order to show their interest. There was no one that showed their interest. Therefore, we went ahead with the reappointment of the two current appointees because they expressed their interest.
Well, is it possible to expand that advertisement?
It was expanded for how long?
Was it on um?
Like, was it, how long, how long was it on?
I'm not sure how long it was on for, but it was put out on Facebook. But I will say, we do have processes in place where people can opt-in notifications. That system has been launched, and it's an opt-in system. You can actually be notified when um plans come available and things like that. That's a new system that started.
Okay, what's that, it says baseball or something?
Matchboard.
Matchboard, okay. Matchboard is the, is the place where you can, has all the list of all the boards where you would put your information if you're interested in, in a vacancy on Monday.
And whenever anyone goes into Matchboard and apply if they like to be on these committees, they were actually gonna notice when their application was opened, when their application was reviewed, when their application was denied, or their application was accepted. So there's, there's um great things to this Matchboard, and you would get the link on the website or Facebook that anyone that is interested.
By their, of our terms, it's the Matchboard. See, I'm not familiar with that, that's what I'm asking.
We've had people, we've had clients call me, people call me, and ask me if there was openings, and I had said yes. Even if they would like it, they could send me an email directly if they would like to, but they never follow through on that. I've had people call me. I've given them my email address, I've told them to send me an email telling me which board that they would be interested in applying for with the vacancy. And I've never received an email.
So is.
I just wanna be sure that we reach every possible outlet.
For clarification, I guess what she's saying, when they go to the city page, is it a link on the city page, say Matchboard?
Yes.
And then once you click that, it shows all the boards and the vacancies and all that? Uh, you got that?
I understood that part, but I was um needing clarification on whether or not there are other um options.
Well, if you would like me to bring to the next city council meeting, I can gladly bring to you. A mayor can announce the vacancies that are available. I know that there's currently a vacancy available for ARB. It has been on work for over a year, and nobody has applied.
Right, and it's been advertised.
And it's on the architectural review board. So if anybody's interested in being on the architectural review board, please come see me.
You're already. Already on it.
If you um do that, you know, in the future for all of the board appointments, that would certainly be appreciated because I prob, I think probably, I'm saying possibly, a lot of people do not go to Matchboard or um social media. It doesn't sound.
Well, you don't necessarily have to go to Matchboard, but you can contact the city clerk anytime to say, I would like to be on a committee.
We need to put the information out there that um these positions are available, and they need to have the location as soon as they can contact.
I'll press to the next council meeting. I'll have the um justice and mayor to read out what I knew area that says um board vacancies, and we can list the one, two, three, four, whatever is open at that point in time.
Okay. And is it possible to have um maybe an application and all of that for the people who may be in attendance at the meeting?
What they need to do is just submit a resume.
Okay.
And, and another, another way I, I think would be best as well, um, just to say, um, city, I mean, city clerk can actually send an application to each council member. And if you know anyone that's interested, you can go out into your communities, in your districts, in your churches, in your other organizations, and say that this committee um has a, a, a seat open. You can definitely help the city clerk on that part to do that job as well, to advertise.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Next, we have city administrative reports, monthly financial report, and that will be done tonight by our financial director, Mr. Brandon Carter.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
I'm here to be, uh, give you the monthly financial report for the month ending uh December. Uh, year-to-date for our general fund revenue, it was two million six hundred seventy-two oh four with expenditures of five million seven hundred ninety-three two oh six. Was put us in a deficit of three million one hundred, two, two hundred twenty-three. Uh, I would like to remind Mayor Council that there was some circumstances that needed to be addressed, but um the Mayor Council are already fully aware of that. Uh, for our water fund, a year-to-date was one million uh and two nine hundred seventy-two uh with expenditures of eight hundred thirty-seven thousand. It will put us in a surplus of a hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred ten. For our sewer fund, a year-to-date was uh one million seven hundred fifty-nine five hundred seventy-three with expenses of one million seven hundred twenty-one and sixteen, was put us in a surplus as thirty-eight thousand five hundred fifty-seven. For stone water, a year-to-date was one hundred nine thousand three hundred seventy-one with expenditures of twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, was put us in a surplus as eighty-four thousand three hundred seventy-two. Uh, for our water reserve, a year-to-date was a hundred ten thousand six hundred ten, as well as our sewer reserves, uh, which is a year-to-date was a hundred eight thousand two hundred two and fifty cents. That is our financial report for the month ending of December.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Next, we'll go to approval on monthly bills. We have items one through six for your consideration, council, for January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Can you see it?
Motion to approve.
Hold on a second. Oh, I'm sorry, can I get a motion to approve? You got, can I get a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second, any questions?
Yes, I got a question on item one. The roll carts for sanitation, that's brand new roll carts. We trying to get a, what's that? Yeah. Is that replacing uh roll, new roll carts with the old's or?
Are we, go ahead.
Sorry ma'am, yes, we uh, we put out a bid a few months ago, what was that? That was like mid.
I think it was October.
October-ish? Yes, but it's already been approved, and it's already been ordered. Yes, but it's already been approved and we, it's already been ordered and everything.
Okay, okay.
So, your answer?
Yeah, that's my answer, I just wanted to make sure that it was the roll carts. And I just was looking at the, the figure of how much they cost. As long as we put a bid out, that was the cheapest bid that we got. That's the only bid that we got? Okay.
Well, I have some comments. In light of our recent, uh, staff change, in light of our recent, um, staff change and with the uncertainty as to what our, uh, finances are until after this forensic audit, I do, I am really, don't know what has transpired, have no clue, but I feel that that audit should give us some clarification. And so, with these bills to be paid, I, I, I'm very, I'm very nervous about, um, and I hope my nervousness is not warranted, but I, I do, I do have serious issues with my vote on paying anything because the, um, information has not been properly disclosed and these figures on here, and I know, uh, Mr. Carter has been, I'm assuming you've been spending a lot of time trying to compile whatever, um, uh, financial documents or whatever you need?
Yes.
And that's not an easy one- or two-day task and I, I really appreciate your thoroughness and your knowledge, your background and your experience and your skills, I really do. But, um, given just a few hours a day along with your other duties and responsibilities, I'm not, I don't know where these numbers came from and I'm sure if you printed these numbers, they are accurate, but until that audit is completed, I don't, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with voting on any of this and I'll leave it at that.
Any other comments, counsel? If none, all in favor, show of hands for paying the bills, items one through six.
Can I make one comment there?
All right, he voted. Clerk, you're good? Any opposed? Next on the agenda, we have executive session pursuant to South Carolina thirty dash four dash seventy and the discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contractual arrangements relating to matters including but not limited to grants awarded the city of lakes, of the city's obligations related thereto Wallace Street and Lincoln Avenue, employee-staff medical coverage, information technology, IT contracts, additional for the receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to a pending threat and or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege and the settlement of legal and/or grievance claims. I need a motion to go into executive session, please.
So moved.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. All in favor? Thank you. We will now go into executive session.
All in favor? All in favor?
Oh, never mind. I didn't know that.
Thank you. Action as needed with respect to matters discussed in executive session is the next thing on our agenda. I need a motion for that mayor with the advice of the city attorney is empowered to negotiate an amicable, is that the way you say it? Okay. Resolution of the grievance slash claims of A.M. Robinson.
So moved, so, second.
Has been properly moved as second. Any questions, council? No questions? I'm sorry, I did, I'll repeat myself because I didn't have my mic. So we'll just repeat this. So I ask for a motion that the mayor and the vice, with the advice of the city attorney is empowered to negotiate an amicable resolution of the grievance slash claims of A.M. Robinson. A former employee of the city of Lake City.
Move to approve?
I think, oh, just, just repeat what we said.
Okay.
So moved, second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? Next, we're going to go to council member reports and mayor reports. We're going to start with, I would not start with you asking, I would, I'm going to let you end it, okay? Okay, Councilman Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight on council evening, especially expressing your concerns. We here looking forward to happening in any way that we can because we elect officials to make sure the better outcome for the city of Lake City. I want to congratulate our new elected member, Ms. Michelle. Askins and I knew appointed Mayor Pro Tem Cola, Ms. Cola Cooper. I want to congratulate them. If it's anything that I could do, you know, just give me a phone call. I'll be around town riding to stop me and let me know anything that's going on. I'd be for sure to help you out. I get you in touch with the right person if I don't have to ask. And that's it for me.
Excuse me. Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. Just wanted to thank everyone for coming out again. Thank you again to my colleagues for the new appointment. I appreciate that. And like I said, I plan to do what I need to do in order to ensure that the citizens of Lake City are taken care of. I wanted to also let you guys know that last night I went to the delegation meeting. And I think that it is that, yeah, Florence County delegation, the meeting that they had last night in Florence. And I think that is very important, whether you're on city council or if you are on the school board. It's very important for you guys to come out and, and voice your concerns of what you want the legislative to do during their session because their work for you as well. And that's how you get things done there. It was, I can tell you for the, the school board, it was someone actually out there advocating for Florence County School District Three, Two, and One, if I'm not mistaken. So I just want you guys to know that they are willing to help. I think Representative Kirby was there. I know Senator Rodney Sav and a few, a few others was there. But it's, it's that, it's our, it's that, at that moment, it's your time to advocate for the rural areas to get help in the respective places. So I think that that was a good experience. That was my first one. And I plan, plan on going to the ones coming up, you know, every year that they actually have. I think that, that is it. Oh, I want to give kudos to Lake City Police Department on solving, not solving, but actually, well, kind of solving. I don't know how you would say it. But apprehending the people that, that, you know, killed Lindsey Simmons. I think that that was a big, it's been a big break in the case. And 20 years later, it finally gives her family closure, some closure to what has happened. I know that there are still other murders that have been unsolved in the area. And I'm sure, and I know that there are families out there that want the same justice as well. And I just hope that you and your police, police department and the other agencies as well can help bring them closure as well. Other than that, I just want everyone to continue to be safe. Of course, be vigilant in your areas. And if there's anything that I can do to help, I am here. I'm a phone call away. And let's just work together so that we can make Lake City a better place. And just, just work together. There's a lot going on. So we just need to just work together so that, you know, we can thrive. It's, it's all about thriving. That's my word for this year, just thrive. So that's it. Y'all have a good night. Be safe.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming and Happy New Year to everyone I've not seen and wish Happy New Year to. And I would like to encourage you to continue to attend the meetings. Encourage your neighbors, your friends, anybody who wants to learn what's going on around town. Encourage them to continue to these meetings and ask questions. You have a right to know. You pay your taxes. You pay your high water, sewer water rates. So you have a right to be able to voice your concerns about things that are displeasing you in the community. Again, thank you.
Just bear with me, guys. I am a little under the weather, so my voice is a little shaky. But thank you all for coming out. Happy New Year. Please continue to come out and voice your concerns at every meeting. I would like to go ahead and congratulate our newly elected councilmember Askins. Mayor Pro Tem Cooper. I gotta get used to saying that. But just thank you all for just allowing me to serve as your Mayor Pro Tem for, I believe, four years, I believe. The year's starting to run together. I'm a vet now, you know, I've been up here for 10 years. So just thank you all for allowing me to serve. It was definitely my decision to step back. It was time for me to step back for personal reasons. But I really do think that Mayor Pro Tem Cooper will be a great fit for this position. I'm still here, of course. If you need me, you got me. I'm looking forward to the new year, the changes. Hopefully, mayor and council can work together, build together for the betterment of the city. And hopefully, we will see you all next month. Thank you.
I have to have to congratulate our newly elected, newly appointed Mayor Pro Tem, Ewanica Cooper. Congratulations. And congratulations, Melissa Askins, your newly appointed.
I can echo everything that was said already, especially to all the re-elected council member and to the newly elected members that come aboard to see how nicely we do at our meeting. It's nice. But anyhow, we thank you. And it, it's a new year. It's a new day. A lot of things have happened. And we're gonna work it out. We're gonna work it out. I think it's good to know that we are not broke, they say. We're not in the shape some of y'all saying we are in. We're not in the best shape. But let everyone respect each other. You may not respect my decision. You may not respect my comments or what I say. I'm a little geeky. I never could talk. I was a child that stood in the corner because my teachers say I could not talk. I had a speech impediment. When I went to New York and I met all these people and they were speaking all these different languages. And I said, they can't talk neither. So why should I sit back and not express myself? We want to express ourselves with a time and place for everything. And thank y'all for coming. And to the police department and Mr. Carter here. You got a big ball. You got to carry the load. But anyhow, I respect your position. And as a police officer, I respect y'all and thank y'all. Because regardless of what, you're not gonna like all the police, especially when they come and get me when I did something wrong. You can say, well, you know, you shouldn't have done it. But I respect your position. I respect all of y'all and thank y'all. And I turn it here. Ms. Marsha, thank you. I never say thanks to everybody. You know, we're not perfect. We ain't all together, but we're gonna get there. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming and I'm looking forward to getting to know everybody better and working with the council and everybody here to make Lake City a better place.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers, for your reports. Happy New Year to everyone. What was that? She said a little bit more than William. Happy New Year to everyone. I appreciate everyone for coming out and, and also watching on Facebook. Congratulations to our newly elected, you're gonna keep getting correct, congratulations. Congratulations to our re-elected and congratulations to Mayor Pro Tem Cooper. We are definitely in a place where we want to see Lake City grow. And I know there's comments that came up in public comment period. I'm thinking a couple of months ago, if not last month, and also tonight. And I'll address it because it was directly to me when I allowed others to speak. And I did speak to someone after that meeting about that, and I admitted it. I allowed others to speak longer than the two minute, but the two minute has to stay. But I will admit, yes, I did allow it. And that's not allowable for me. And, and that's not going to happen any longer because every, but respect is given where respect, respect is due. Respect has to happen here in the city of Lake City, wherever we are. It really hurt my heart tonight when I saw the faces of our young people tonight in the front and over on the side when they saw adults that they're supposed to be looking up to acting the way that they acted tonight. It really hurt my heart. And we have to do better as individuals and we have to do better together. Now, with that being said, the two-minute clock, yes, is staying up and it will be two minutes. And when you're asked to sit, please sit if you do not abide by that because this is business that's being held in here. No, we're not going to agree on everything. And we can, we can all agree that we're gonna disagree to a point, and that should be fine. But we should never disrespect each other. Never disrespect anyone. But I commend my staff. We had a change in staff, as everyone know. And there was reasons for that. There was a change in staff, but we're moving forward from it. We can't go nowhere but up from this. And we're, we're taking everything into consideration. Let me tell you, my staff, our staff, city of Lake City staff has been in there working diligently when we got back on Monday morning. When we know the, the issues at hand, we contacting our attorney. And yes, Dart's been thrown at him, but he's doing his job. We've been talking to him. Our city clerk has been going over and beyond her duties. Seriously, she's been going over and beyond her duties. Our finance director, the finance department, the grants department. We are doing what we're supposed to do for the city of Lake City. Yeah, there's some things that was just brought to my attention and made me aware of that I should have been aware of from the beginning. But when I have a great staff like I have that brought it to my attention, when they realized I wasn't aware of it. And they said, we have your back, mayor. That's us working together to move forward. That's not pointing fingers. So I ask the citizens of Lake City to please, please, let's do 2025 much better than we did before. We started, started out rocky, but we don't have to end rocky. We don't have to end rocky. We have a lot going on for the city of Lake City. And we got to understand, there's a lot of people looking at us. I thank Chief of Police. I thank all the departments. Everybody has stepped forward to say, mayor, city clerk, Mr. Carter, this is what we're going to do so we'll make sure that our city stays afloat. Each department, we know the issues at hand. We definitely know the issues at hand more than ever now. And we're working on them. Might not be at your pace, but believe me, we're working on them. So I ask you to please entrust us in that. But always bring it with respect. We have to have respect, y'all. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Thank you.